Good evening, everyone. We're going to call the order for the city council meeting for Monday, April 4th, 2022. And we'd like to start with prayer tonight if Pastor Tommy Wright from New Jackson Tabernacle Church can lead us.
May we bow our heads, presence of the Lord. Lord God, we're grateful for this opportunity once again to stand on these grounds. We thank you, Lord, for your peace that surpasses all knowledge and understanding. Thank you for having kept us through the pandemic. Although many have gone on, but Lord, your grace and mercy has kept us here. And Lord, we want to redeem the town because we know the days of evil. Well, bless oh God as we come tonight to be a blessing upon this body, Lord, that runs the government of our city. But Lord, your words say, except the Lord keepeth the city, the watchman watches but in vain. But we know, Lord, that you watching over the watchments and keeping them, Lord, as we guard about ourselves with the security that they provide. Help the Lord, help our mayor and all those that are his arm barriers. Bless us, oh God, as we continue to strive. Keep her in the center of your will. Help, Lord, that we'll do your business, the business of the people. Bless and strengthen us, oh God. Look on us, oh God, as we come tonight. Let the decisions that be made bring prosperity to our city, make our lives better. Bless our leader, oh God. Give him the wisdom of Solomon, Lord, that he'll be able to lead this great city that you have placed him over. Now, Lord, have your way and let your will be done, and we'll call it all in Jesus's name. Thank God, and the people say amen. God bless you all.
The city council will lead the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the glory of the righteous saints, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Cobb. I was thinking the same thing. We're going to start with item four, public comments at this time. Aaron Most, I'm sorry, let me read real quickly. Please give your name and direct your comments to the mayor. Comments will be limited to three minutes. There will be no personal attacks upon council members, staff, or other persons in attendance or absent will be permitted. In addition, discussions of matters which are under current legal review will not be permitted. Mr. Most?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. My name is Aaron Most. I'm the principal of Grace Christian Academy in Kankakee here on the, I guess, southeast corner. And I was, I'll just tell you a little bit about our school real quickly. Our mission is to pursue wisdom. And what that means is it's more than just giving information transfer, but it's to develop character, to develop a way of utilizing that information in a way that honors God. And that's what we are about as a school. And I'm here on, from a phone call from Mike O'Brien, and I've been on the phone with Reggie Jones about ARPA funds and the city's use of ARPA funds. We have gone through and we know that to release COVID funding through the American Rescue Plan, that goes under some pretty strict guidelines. And they put out a document called the Final Rule. And my team has gone through that document, and we have come up with four things that we think would fit under all of that. And we went through and cited all of the Final Rule documents where we think we could possibly fit under that. And we're just excited to be included in the thought. And if it comes about, that would be awesome. So that's all I've got. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next is Lisa Sanford.
Hello, Mayor. I am Lisa Sanford, and I am school board president of Grace Christian Academy. So I'm here on the same behalf. I just want you to know that Mr. Most is a blessing to the school. He is a good steward of our money that we have there, and it would be just wonderful if we did have the opportunity to have these funds available to the school. That's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next is item five, roll call. City council?
Brown. Jones. Johnson. Cobb. Lewis. Navarez. Marzak. Swanson. Crawford. Osenga. O'Brien. Barron. Malone Marshall.
Present.
Grude. Fourteen present, zero absent.
We have a form. Next is item B, department heads?
Passwater. LaRoche. Kubel. Taylor. Jay. Tigash. Nelson. Bertrand. Hoffman. Roswell. Grue or Watson. Thank you.
Next is item six, the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from Monday, March 21st, 2022? We have a motion from Alderman Osenga. Is there a second? We have a second from Alderman Crawford. Is there any questions, comments, changes, or additions to the minutes? Seeing none, roll call?
Brown. Jones. Johnson. Cobb. Lewis. Navarez. Marzak. Swanson. Crawford. Osenga. O'Brien. Barron. Malone Marshall. Grude. Fourteen i's, zero n's.
Okay, minutes are passed. Next is item seven, item A, under petitions?
PB 2022-1-1, an ordinance approving a zoning map amendment at 966 Southeast Avenue from light industrial I-1 to single-family residential R-1.
Mr. Hoffman, can you give us a little background on the planning commission and thoughts and recommendations?
I have it, too, Mayor. Thank you. Yes, we had a public hearing on this case on March 15th before the planning board. This is a property that has been a home for fifty years, probably, on a lot of single-family homes and also on lots of its own light industrial. The gentleman who owns the property would like to expand his home under the current zoning. I can't allow him to do that because it'd be an expansion of a non-performing use. So if he rezones a residential, he could do his home expansion, recontinue to invest in the community. The planning board felt strongly this was appropriate use. In fact, it might hold up a rezoning petition property in the area to single-family, but for now, we need this applicant's request and recommend approval of this. The planning board recommended a serial payment of this.
Is there a motion to suspend the rules for the passage of this ordinance? Alderman Barron? Alderman O'Brien? We have a motion from Alderman Barron and Alderman O'Brien, second, to suspend the rules for this ordinance. Roll call?
Brown. Jones. Johnson. Cobb. Lewis. Navarez. Marzak. Swanson. Crawford. Osenga. O'Brien. Barron. Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Grude. Fourteen i's, zero n's.
Is there a motion to place this ordinance on final reading for passage? We have a motion from Alderman Barron. We have a second from Alderman O'Brien. Is there any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call?
Brown. Jones. Johnson. Cobb. Lewis. Navarez. Marzak. Swanson. Crawford. Osenga. O'Brien. Barron. Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Grude. Fourteen i's, zero n's.
Ordinance passes. Next is item B?
PB 2022-1-3, an ordinance amending certain provisions of the Kankakee zoning ordinance.
Mr. Hoffman, if you can on this one. Thank you.
So we've been working with the city for several years now and going through different cases of variances and other requests that have come through the community. I've identified a number of areas of the code that just need to be updated. For example, we've got several situations where people wanted to have a low fence in the front yard. The various cases we've had on that were supportive, so this revision will allow that. It makes some adjustments to accessory uses, better defines garages and how they can be placed on a property. During the planning development regulations, to remove the requirement that the planning development be two acres, that size limitation was problematic in the downtown area. We've got some planning development downtown that's going to be smaller than that, so we're going to go a lot of those kind of things. And I think importantly, we took a look at the use list. There's some uses that aren't currently addressed in your code, like food lounges, cigar lounges, the COVID testing facilities, which we've been talking about a lot over the last year. And so we're proposing to amend the table and the act of the ordinance to allow new uses in an appropriate way. So for example, the testing facilities would require additional use, food lounges would require additional use. We added microbreweries to the use list, working presence in there. We added holding stores, believe it or not, holding stores aren't listed in the use list, but they're recent. Hope they give you a place of problem with those, but it should be listed in the code, so we added that to the code. So just really some general cleanup and clarifications in this zoning ordinance. The planning board did have a public hearing on this, started February 15th, continued from March 15th, and then recommended approval of eight to none of these proposed changes.
Is there a motion to suspend the rules for the passage of this ordinance? We have a motion from Alderman Crawford. Is there a second? We have a second from Alderwoman Swanson. Roll call?
Brown. Jones. Johnson. Cobb. Lewis. Navarez. Marzak. Swanson. Crawford. Osenga. O'Brien. Barron. Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Grude. Fourteen i's, zero n's.
Is there a motion to place this ordinance on final reading? We have a motion from Alderman Crawford. Is there a second? We have a second from Alderwoman Swanson. Is there any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call?
Brown. Jones. Johnson. Cobb. Lewis. Navarez. Marzak. Swanson. Crawford. Osenga. O'Brien. Barron. Malone Marshall. Grude. Fourteen i's, zero n's.
Ordinance passes. Next is item C?
PB 2022-2-1, an application for conditional use permit to allow for the operation of a used motor vehicle sales business at 596 South Skyler Avenue, Zone C-2. And we have an ordinance approving and a resolution denying a conditional use permit for a certain property located within the city of Kankakee, Kankakee County, Illinois, at 596 South Skyler Avenue.
Mr. Hoffman, can you provide us with the planning commission?
Yes, so the planning board reviewed this one at the March 15th meeting as well as held a public hearing. There were public comments and oppositions in this case. This is right adjacent to right across the street from our proposed Riverwalk Park that we're looking at at the corner of River and Skyler. This is right now outside of us, can be installed, will supply us hot dogs before, I believe. Given the location, given the prominent visibility of that corner, given the fact that Kankakee does have quite a number of used car lots already, all those things combined suggested that the planning board was not comfortable with this proposal and recommended nothing to deny this request for the use.
So before you, you have an ordinance approving the conditional use permit, and you have a resolution denying the conditional use permit. Is there a motion for one of the options? Alderman Barron?
Would you like to make a motion that we adopt the resolution denying the conditional use permit?
We have a motion from Alderman Barron accepting the resolution denying the conditional use permit for the property. Is there a second? We have a second from Alderman O'Brien. Is there any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call?
Brown. Jones. Thank you. Johnson. Cobb. Lewis. Navarez. Marzak. Swanson. Crawford. Osenga. O'Brien. Barron. Malone Marshall. Grude. Thirteen i's, one abstention.
So the resolution denying the conditional use permit passes. Next is item eight, in add as communications. And is it the pleasure of the council to combine A, B, and C together, or do you want to keep those separate? Lot of heads combine, okay. So clerk, if you could read A, B, and C, and then we would look for a motion from approval from the council.
I'll second.
Why don't you go ahead and read them in the record?
Sure. Item A is Hippocrates Medical Clinic, and GFWC Women's Club of Kankakee are requesting permission to host their Cinco de Mayo Celebration Parade on Saturday, April 30th, 2022, from 11:00 a.m. until 11:30 a.m. Item B is St. John Paul II Catholic Parish is requesting closure of the streets surrounding their property located at 956 South 10th Avenue to host Passion of Christ Live on Friday, April 15th, 2022, from 4:30 p.m. until 7:00 p.m. And item C is the Community Arts Council of Kankakee County is requesting closure of the Kankakee Depot Fountain Area and all parking lots and alleys surrounding, and East Merchant Street at South Skyler Avenue to host their Fall Art and Craft Stroll on Sunday, September 11th, 2022, from 7:00 a.m. until 7:00 p.m.
We had a motion from Alderwoman Swanson. I believe the second was from Alderwoman Malone Marshall, correct? All right. Is there any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call?
Brown. Jones. Johnson. Cobb. Lewis. Navarez. Marzak. Swanson. Crawford. Osenga. O'Brien. Barron. Malone Marshall. Grude. Fourteen i's, zero n's.
Communications are all approved. Next is item nine, standard committees. Item, we'll start with item A?
Item A is community development from Monday, October 4th, 2021.
Can we just do all three of them?
Absolutely.
B is community development from Monday, November 1st, 2021, and C is community development agency from Monday, February 7th, 2022.
For all three of the meetings, we didn't really have any special guests or anything. I would just encourage everyone, as always, that the man who was reported as an excellent item as part of the faculty for CBA, it does leave everybody up to date on all the outreach programs and work meetings, as well as the current status of the barbering and other CBA programs. So it's available and now even more accessible than it was before. So if you're having any problems or issues finding a local support, get ahold of Barbie and other institutes to report it quite right now. Thank you.
Next is item D and E?
D is economic development from Thursday, January 27th, 2022, and E is economic development from Thursday, March 24th, 2022.
Alderman Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I have a little bit of Alderman Swanson's comments, but I do want to say that we did have a presentation from the Tim Nugent Economic Alliance of Kankakee. And then in March, we had another presentation from a developer for Harrah Street, Harrah Avenue. And the rest of the information is in the minutes. I'll probably read it.
And then item F is public safety for Tuesday, March 8th, 2022.
Alderman Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's a good key to say.
Pretty fancy. He's like, since Alderman Brown brought that up, you all have, I did place those in front of all. So as you know, sometimes when you come in for your meetings, the front door of this building is locked, and that is a good thing for security. But obviously, when you have a meeting here, we do have to have the front door open for, to, for the public to be able to access and make sure that we're following the Open Meetings Act. So you all have a key. We ask that if you need to, and the police department's not here, be able to unlock that door. But when you leave, if you can make sure you use that same key and lock it back up. But as Alderman Brown said, you're now all official key holders to the city, so congratulations.
Thank you. First of all, I recommend the minutes include liberal opinion in the minutes. I'm not sure if it's named out, but I love naming out. You tell by the list, Alderman's government has warrants will be called off orders by 30, with no further comment. The minutes were favored to be twenty-two minutes. There were motions to approve the minutes by Alderman O'Brien, second by Alderman Grude. The minutes will prove five hours, no names. David Dunn would report to report to the police at the five o'clock in the first with the chief, Colonel Brooks. And then the favor, the early budget summary, reported that the fire department hired the law that finished your, he tells you hire and you get the gear and equipment. He also placed the gear for the fire department to respond to that night on Fair Street. He would be meeting first by the fillers. He reported the hours, the main reports spent for this good business, the budget for waiting to make it to 20%. He reported that his department's staff level began 47, so he had one fire fight to be signed on the evening of February 22. He said he would maintain his staff level at 46, but remained of this good business, but he does have 49. He wrote, he reported that the new hiring for the first of last year would be judged to be spent by March 16th, 22, and should be scheduled to deliver to a secondary site with additional equipment, at which time the fire department's numbers would be trained on that apparatus. The engine should be in service by the beginning of April of 22. He reported that engine four were transferred to the, to the, to the, to the process. He reported that it would be pumped for the month fairies, called 400 days, called medical calls, 205. There was no truck to find the state, respond for one, I can follow on that. Five dollars for a month, less than $10,000, and E, M, S bill, and $155 received in revenue. Chief, chief wrote states that we will start the new hiring testing process by April 30th, 22, for the new hiring, private for these counties in Kansas, Kansas City. Chief wrote for the bills for the month, over $55,840.00 cents. There was a motion by Alderman Navarez, second by Alderman O'Brien, to approve the bill, five eyes, no names, bill can approve. The total overtime hours, 108 hours, federal, total cost, $5,142.00 cents, compared to 279.7 times hours of 21, total cost, $15,777.00 cents. Code issued for the month, called for $657, and he reported that $15,110.90 south saved by misstep, three personnel, a month fairway. He submitted his monthly incident type group chart, monthly property loss documentation, monthly by incident by award, monthly ATM desk call, 300 group fairways, hall of fairways, monthly mellow building report, monthly fly building report, monthly fly suspension, public education for the month fairway. On the police side, chief asked for, reported that the police department reported an error for February 22, called 61 officer, that he delivered that 65. You can see the breakdown of that, of that 61 officer. He, he, the four officer will be completed by the end of March, two of them will be completed by the training by May of 22. He reported that the other injuries, list has been adopted. He said the hiring testing list of initial 15 out of 50, only 9 out of 50 still remain on the list. And who would hire, he's under, had three officers from that list to attend, they gathered in the maintenance. He planned to possible to test the length, name of unit, of 22. He had to blur three parts in the academy, the name of three parts in the academy. That chief asked would give the update of, of this new vehicle, ordered a unit in office. He believes these vehicles will be delivered in late months, but it will take four to five weeks to install and build those vehicles. By this end of update, so that most of these vehicles, often received and installed, the panel began the 30th of March, still apply, began in May to have all officers trained and wearing masks. He reported that officer received 11 fire, or actually officer recovered 11 fires in February, and had recovered 26 fires in January of 22. Officer arrested six individuals, repeated and unaworked, brother, in their car, all numbers. Chief asked would report the bill for month fairway, total $1,202,243.3 cents, motion by Alderman O'Brien, second by Alderman Navarez, to approve the bill, five eyes, no names, bill can approve. Chief asked, chief asked for, before the start, we will start the overtime, we start reporting overtime hours in the same manner that they for assistance to be some more uniformed, but the overtime hours, federal, total, 171.5 hours, which is $10,347.00. Overtime due delay call, shift, shift towards detecting and court. Police monthly staff, federal, 22, total 44, gave two calls, called service, 261 cases, 65 battles, arrested 10 new members, crack stop 221, citation of 481, Booker Pro, 92, farmer recovery, loving, and 109 accidents. Shot fighters, report 36 shots fired, related call, 13, non-helpful calls, 106 incidents of domestic related calls, one drug overdose, and the property also received, submitted monthly citation, administered total report from group A and group B criminal report, they have died. On the whole business, we discussed the vehicle replacement purchase, maintenance schedule for the blink end line.
We don't have a firm number yet, but it's anticipated that it's probably an increase of about seven percent or about $35,000 more a month, our monthly bill for treating, because our flows are so high. So this is an effort to keep up with that, but we hope that maybe in future we reduce those flows substantially and maybe we can make some of those repairs and keep this as very minimal as possible. But with the cost of inflation and our karma bills that we're having there, that's where we're at right now with this ordinance. So. Alderman Brown.
We need it, need it, can't keep it, need it. The flow not that much?
This year, yeah. Everybody else has been doing their INI and getting their flows down, which means now we're having a heavier amount that's going in. Yeah, so last year we were based on flow amount was based on about 63%. This year it's trending 68% to 69%, substantially higher. Is there any other questions regarding this ordinance? Hopefully this is going to help you as aldermen and all the women when there's those questions, and it definitely will help Clara and Aqua, we believe, so. Seeing none, roll call.
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prue.
Aye.
14 ayes, zero nays.
Ordinance passes. Next, under new business, I'm going to let Clerk Gall read A, B, and C, but is there a consensus among the council to combine those three items? Two of them are handicap parking and one is a stop sign. You okay with that? Clerk Gall, you can read items A, B, and C, please.
Yep. A is an ordinance amending Chapter 32, Section 231, entitled Handicap Parking of the Municipal Code of the City of Kankakee, rescinding ordinance number 2018-58, establishing a handicap parking at 1351 Cobb Boulevard. B is an ordinance amending Chapter 32, Section 231, entitled Handicap Parking of the Municipal Code of the City of Kankakee, handicap parking signs established at 1451 East Oak Street. And C is an ordinance amending Chapter 32, Article 7, Section 238 of the Municipal Code of the City of Kankakee, Illinois, establishing a stop sign intersection at South 7th Avenue and West Water Street.
Is there a motion to combine these three ordinances and suspend the rules for passage? We have a motion from Alderman Navarez. We have a second from Alderman Cobb. Roll call.
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prue.
Aye.
14 ayes, zero nays.
Is there a motion to place these three ordinances, item A, B, and C, on final reading for passage? We have a motion from Alderman Navarez. Is there a second?
There is.
Second from Alderman Cobb. Is there any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prue.
Aye.
14 ayes, zero nays.
Ordinance pass. Next is item D.
An ordinance amending Chapter 21, Article 1, licenses generally, Section 21-04, payment of fee of the Kankakee Municipal Code.
Is there a motion to suspend the rules for passage of this ordinance?
No, Mayor.
We have a motion from Alderman Osinga. Is there a second?
No, second.
We have a second from Alderman Navarez. Roll call.
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prue.
Aye.
14 ayes, zero nays.
Ordinance passage. Next is item E.
Recommendation to approve the 2022 Motor Fuel Tax Street Maintenance Program.
Mr. Figgish, can you give us a quick update?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. In front of you tonight, you have the materials program that we do every year for the city. Working with Mr. Jay and Public Force, they come up with a solid materials program that includes various things such as cold hot mix, traffic incited materials, stone, asphalt milling, and other miscellaneous items that Public Force uses throughout the course of the year.
Is there a motion to accept the recommendation to approve the 2022 Motor Fuel Tax Street Maintenance Program?
I don't think we've ever accepted this before.
We have a motion from Alderman Brown.
Sir.
You guys want to thumb wrestle? We have a second from Alderwoman Lewis. Is there any questions or comments? Roll call.
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prue.
Aye.
14 ayes, zero nays.
Ordinance passage. Next is item E.
Recommendation to approve the 2022 Motor Fuel Tax Street Maintenance Program.
Mr. Figgish.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the correspond resolution with the materials program that was just passed for the $150,000.
Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
No.
We have a motion from Alderman Osinga. Is there a second?
No.
We have a second from Alderman Crawford. Is there any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prue.
Aye.
14 ayes, zero nays.
Orderance pass. Next is item D.
An ordinance amending Chapter 21, Article 1, licenses generally, Section 21-04, payment of fee of the Kankakee Municipal Code.
Is there a motion to suspend the rules for passage of this ordinance?
No, Mayor.
We have a motion from Alderman Osinga. Is there a second?
No, second.
We have a second from Alderman Navarez. Roll call.
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prue.
Aye.
14 ayes, zero nays.
Orderance pass. Next is item E.
A recommendation to approve the 2022 Motor Fuel Tax Street Maintenance Program.
Mr. Figgish, can you give us a quick update?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. In front of you tonight, you have the materials program that we do every year for the city. Working with Mr. Jay and Public Force, they come up with a solid materials program that includes various things such as cold hot mix, traffic incited materials, stone, asphalt milling, and other miscellaneous items that Public Force uses throughout the course of the year.
Is there a motion to accept the recommendation to approve the 2022 Motor Fuel Tax Street Maintenance Program?
I don't think we've ever accepted this before.
We have a motion from Alderman Brown.
Sir.
You guys want to thumb wrestle? We have a second from Alderwoman Lewis. Is there any questions or comments? Roll call.
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prue.
Aye.
14 ayes, zero nays.
Orderance pass. Next is item F, appointments.
We have Ruth Hatcher for the library board.
We have an opening on the library board, and Mr. Bertrand did request an additional member, and him and his team came up with some suggestions, and one of them was Mrs. Hatcher. So we did reach out to her, and she graciously accepted our pending council approval to sit on the library board. It was a fun phone call, because I think we spent two minutes talking about that, about 15 minutes talking about my kids going to school there when they were very little, and other people's kids, and we kindly joked about, you know, I said, I think this will be very easy for the city council, as most people know her. And I just joked with Clerk Gall about she may be one of the most popular people, if not the most popular person in the city of Kankakee. Mrs. Hatcher, if you can stand up, please, for the city council.
You made that motion.
We have a motion, we have a motion and a second by Alderman Brown and Alderman Jones.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prue.
Aye.
14 ayes, zero nays.
Congratulations and welcome, Mr. Secretary. I believe Director Bertrand, hopefully you're a happy man tonight.
I'm very happy, thank you.
There we go. Next is item 13, motions and resolutions. Item A.
We have a proclamation declaring April 2022 as Child Abuse Prevention Month.
I'm going to read to you a proclamation here, declaring April 2020, 2022 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas preventing child abuse, child abuse and neglect in a community is a community problem that depends on the involvement among people throughout the community. Whereas we have a responsibility as individuals, neighbors, community members, and citizens of the city of Kankakee, and whereas safe and healthy childhoods produce confident and successful adults. And whereas child abuse and neglect often occurs when people find themselves in stressful situations without community resources and don't know how to cope. And whereas the majority of child abuse cases stem from situations and conditions that are preventable in an engaged and supportive community. Whereas child abuse and neglect can be reduced by making sure each family member has the support that they need in raising their children in a safe, nurturing environment. And whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships created among social service agencies, schools, faith, communities, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Now therefore, I, Christopher Curtis, by virtue of the authority vested in me of Mayor of Kankakee, Illinois, do hereby claim April 2022 as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and call upon the citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, and businesses to increase their participation in our efforts to support families, thereby preventing child abuse and strengthening the community in which we live. Is there a motion to accept this proclamation?
No.
We have a motion by Alderman Prue and a second by Alderwoman Malone Marshall. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. You may have noticed when you walked in, there was a blue sign out in the front of the building that was just put up today by the Child Network, and they're going around and placing those throughout the community there. So they did place that in front of the public safety building today. Next is item B.
A resolution for maintenance under the Illinois Highway Code for the 2022 Motor Fuel Tax Street Maintenance.
Mr. Figgish.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the correspond resolution with the materials program that was just passed for the $150,000.
Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
No.
We have a motion from Alderman Osinga. Is there a second?
No.
We have a second from Alderman Crawford. Is there any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prue.
Aye.
14 ayes, zero nays.
Congratulations and welcome, Mr. Secretary. I believe Director Bertrand, hopefully you're a happy man tonight.
I'm very happy, thank you.
There we go. Next is item 13, motions and resolutions. Item A.
We have a proclamation declaring April 2022 as Child Abuse Prevention Month.
I'm going to read to you a proclamation here, declaring April 2020, 2022 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas preventing child abuse, child abuse and neglect in a community is a community problem that depends on the involvement among people throughout the community. Whereas we have a responsibility as individuals, neighbors, community members, and citizens of the city of Kankakee, and whereas safe and healthy childhoods produce confident and successful adults. And whereas child abuse and neglect often occurs when people find themselves in stressful situations without community resources and don't know how to cope. And whereas the majority of child abuse cases stem from situations and conditions that are preventable in an engaged and supportive community. Whereas child abuse and neglect can be reduced by making sure each family member has the support that they need in raising their children in a safe, nurturing environment. And whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships created among social service agencies, schools, faith, communities, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Now therefore, I, Christopher Curtis, by virtue of the authority vested in me of Mayor of Kankakee, Illinois, do hereby claim April 2022 as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and call upon the citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, and businesses to increase their participation in our efforts to support families, thereby preventing child abuse and strengthening the community in which we live. Is there a motion to accept this proclamation?
No.
We have a motion by Alderman Prue and a second by Alderwoman Malone Marshall. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. You may have noticed when you walked in, there was a blue sign out in the front of the building that was just put up today by the Child Network, and they're going around and placing those throughout the community there. So they did place that in front of the public safety building today. Next is item B.
A resolution for maintenance under the Illinois Highway Code for the 2022 Motor Fuel Tax Street Maintenance.
Mr. Figgish.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the correspond resolution with the materials program that was just passed for the $150,000.
Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
No.
We have a motion from Alderman Osinga. Is there a second?
No.
We have a second from Alderman Crawford. Is there any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prue.
Aye.
14 ayes, zero nays.
Resolution passes. Next is item D.
A resolution of the city of Kankakee approving an agreement by and between the city of Kankakee, Kankakee County, Illinois, and Mad Bomber Fireworks Productions for the Annual Independence Day Celebration Fireworks Display Show.
So this is one thing that I never thought jobs and getting people to work would be a difficult thing. So we were notified back in January, January, early February, that the firm Melrose, who typically does the fireworks in the city of Kankakee, would not be able to do them this year because due to lack of employees that are certified to set off fireworks, they could not do it. They had to handle some of their customers. We then went looking out to see who we could find. We reached out to see who Bradley uses for National Night Out, Bourbon A for the Friendship Festival, other communities. We went through about four or five other companies, and they all had the same answer. They aren't taking on any new projects. If they were, the soonest they could do them would be like June 30th, one company said they could do. Another one was June 28th, which is like a Thursday or Tuesday before the three-day weekend. We did, ultimately, just about 10 days ago, were able to find this company out of Elgin, Illinois, who said they could do it on July 2nd. My first reaction was, is we're looking for July 4th, but then I thought about it being a three-day weekend. It might not be the worst thing in the world that you go home on Friday night, kind of start to relax, spend Saturday, have the fireworks on Saturday night, and you still have Sunday and Monday to be with your friends and family and relax, instead of having to maybe get your, getting back from fireworks at 10:30, 11 o'clock on a Monday night and having to work at 8 o'clock the next morning. So they did reserve that Saturday, July 2nd for them. I told them this would take council action. So you do have an agreement in front of you. It is $24,000. It is $4,000 increase. What they were charging last year due to cost and inflation is the reason they said. There is potential, but it's not. I don't have anything tonight of maybe a potential sponsor that can help write down that cost, and we'll continue to work on that. But we are trying to lock something in for that weekend. So there's a resolution before you to authorize the approval of, to execute a contract for fireworks on July 2nd, and the cost of $24,000.
I'd like to make that motion.
We have a motion from Alderwoman Swanson.
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Marzak. Is there any questions or comments? Roll call.
Brown.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Crawford.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Prue.
Aye.
14 ayes, zero nays.
Orderance pass. Next is item C.
A resolution approving a First Amendment to Tax Increment Financing Agreement between the city of Kankakee and Three Rivers Property Management, LLC.
This is Brewer Watson. Can you go ahead and explain this to the group, if you don't mind?
Thanks, Mayor. Back in February at the Economic Development Committee meeting, I mentioned that we would be bringing this back to you just because of the meeting with the bank who is doing the financing for this project. This is the old, I might be telling my age because I don't remember. I think it's the Kankakee Title Building on North, South, North Skyler. Thank you. Now I got to get my directions right. And so it's a $3 million development that's happening there. We've already approved the developer agreement, but because financing, inflation, cost of materials, things have changed with the bank. So to make this work, we needed to make a couple of changes. So the redevelopment agreement, we did remove the clause about not being able to sell the property. So that is in there. And, I mean, the developer is not going to be selling the property, but we did remove that clause. We also set the EAV to $1.4 million in this, basically saying with this investment that this development will increase the value of that property to $1.4 million. That is important for the financing side for the bank and the underwriting team. Also, we eliminated the north pin from this agreement, and so of course that reduces the cost of the project since the parking lot will not be included in this for right now. So this is all to help close on that construction loan so that we can get the project started. And so these were the three minor changes that we needed to make to make this happen.
And all three of these, I think, Mr. Hoffman and Director Brewer Watson, no, these really have any adverse effects to Kankakee?
No, there's no effect on us to the city. This is all for the financing and for the developer. This all makes the decision on what the payments back are going to be for that loan, so it's not on the city.
So we're looking for a motion to approve this amendment, a resolution to approve this amendment between the developer and the city. We have a motion from Alderwoman Malone Marshall, second, from Alderman Prue. Is there any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Brown.